Good evening. I want to bring this meeting of the Clear Lake City Council to order. Tonight at Eldir City Hall at fourteen oh five oh Olympic Drive in Clear Lake to order at six P M. We'll start the roll call.
Councilmember Hooton?
Here.
Councilmember Downey?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Slotin?
Here.
And Mayor Kramer?
Here.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Governor Wilson, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which is founded, created, and responsible by the Constitution of the United States of America.
Now, if you could please remain standing for a minute. I'm not going to do a prayer tonight, but we're going to have a reflection, a moment of silence. We had a pretty darned close call last weekend. And I want to acknowledge our Lake County Fire Protection District, along with Cal Fire and strike teams from, I think, five counties, if I'm correct, Chief Sonoma, Mendocino, Lake, of course, Bellusa and Yellow Counties. They did a fine job, and I think we probably had some divine intervention in at least the saving of one home. So please, I guess, just reflect for a moment. Okay, you seated? Okay, we'll start off with adoption of the agenda. City Manager Flora, do we have any modifications?
No modifications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Now, I'll take a motion.
I move to adopt the agenda.
I'll second it.
Yeah, motion's been made by Councilmember Downey and seconded by Councilmember Hooton. While in favor, vote on your portal. Second, my line portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. First thing we'll start off with, then will be the presentations. Beginning with the swearing in of new police department employees.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we're going to be swearing in four new members of the police department. They've come on between end of March and now. Let's give a little introduction on each of them. But first, I wanted to talk a little bit about the importance of this. Last couple we fired with the two officers that, two of them you're going to meet tonight. They started on Monday. That brings us up to twenty-five in the sworn staffing. The last time we were at this level was twenty twelve. So it's been a long time. Hopefully, we'll stay up there in this range for quite a long time, but it's a pretty big milestone to be up at this level today. So with that, we'll get started. First, Officer Manuel Nunez, want to come one up? He was born in Mexico and raised in Healdsburg, California, after his family immigrated to the United States when he was two years old. Before joining law enforcement, he worked as a diesel mechanic. He pursued a career as a police officer to make a difference in people's lives and give back to the community. Outside of work, he enjoys going to the gym, traveling, spending time with his family and dogs. He is also proud to be the first person in his family to graduate high school and pursue a career in law enforcement. He also speaks, is fluent in Spanish and English. Next, we have Officer Samantha Bono. She grew up in Corona, California. Is the third of four children. She chose a career in law enforcement because she believes the community deserves officers who treat citizens with respect and dignity regardless of the circumstances. Prior to joining the Clear Lake Police Department, she worked at Del Norte County probation and Lake County probation. Outside of work, she enjoys swimming, painting, going to the gym, traveling, and baking. Her travels to fourteen different countries have enriched her perspective and helped her connect with people from different backgrounds. Next, we have Officer Eduardo Angeles. He was raised in the Central Valley and chose law enforcement field because he wanted a career that would motivate him to do good work every day and be proud of what he does. He joined the Clear Lake Police Department for the opportunity to step out of his comfort zone and grow as a police officer. Outside of work, he enjoys going to the gym, running, playing sports like soccer and disc golf. An interesting fact, he likes ketchup, but does not like tomatoes. And he is fluent in Spanish and English as well. And last, we have Officer Manuel Perez. Officer Perez is from Porterville, California. He chose a career in law enforcement because he wanted a job that gave him a sense of purpose and allowed him to help people. Officer Perez was driven to find a career where he could make a lasting impact on others' lives and one that both he and his family could be proud of. Outside of work, he enjoys spending time with his family, hanging out with friends, working out, doing off-road sports, and he is also fluent in Spanish and English.
Just go again and repeat that. I state your name. Do you solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? Against all enemies? Foreign and domestic? That I will bear true faith and allegiance? Constitution of the United States? The Constitution of the State of California? I take this obligation freely? Without any mental reservation? Or purpose of evasion? Then I will well and faithfully discharge the duties on which I am about to enter.
Thank you. And if we could have a couple of minutes to take some photos, that would be great.
Sure. We'll take a few minutes. They said Breastfeeding Awareness Month of August twenty twenty-five. Whereas breastfeeding is recognized as the optimal way to feed infants, it is recommended that individuals breastfeed exclusively for six months and continue breastfeeding for at least the first two years of a child's life. And whereas the journey of breastfeeding looks different for every individual, and that practice should be supported without judgment. And whereas breastfeeding is a proven primary prevention strategy protecting both infants and breastfeeding individuals from a host of chronic and acute diseases and conditions and building a foundation for lifelong health and wellness. And whereas breastfeeding provides a safe, reliable, and renewable food source, especially critical during natural disaster and emergency situations. And whereas the act of breastfeeding builds a strong emotional connection between the breastfeeding individual and infant, a bond which lasts a lifetime. And whereas partners who are active during the breastfeeding experience provide force that lead to better outcomes for both infant and the breastfeeding individual. And whereas employers that provide workplace lactation support experience and impressive return on investment, including lower healthcare costs, reduced absenteeism, reduced turnover rates, and improved morale, job satisfaction, and productivity. And whereas individuals who are successful at meeting their breastfeeding goals are more likely to be surrounded by a supportive team of family, friends, coworkers, employers, healthcare providers, childcare providers, and other members of the community. And whereas communities which create such productive, such positive and supportive environments reap the benefits of healthier infants and parents. A more productive workforce, improved household finances, and empowered families. And whereas the Lake County Breastfeeding Coalition comprised of First Five Lake, Motherwise, Partnership Health Plan, Social Services, and other local agencies and committee members, community members whose efforts support families who choose to breastfeed. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Clear Lake does hereby designate the month of August twenty twenty-five as Breastfeeding Awareness Month and urges all citizens to work together to empower parents and enable breastfeeding now and for the future. Gated the seventh day of August twenty twenty-five and signed by Mayor Clear Lake.
Can I speak this way or this way?
We kind of go sideways, I guess.
We'll go sideways, okay. Uh, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. My name is Sabrina Andres. I'm the Executive Director of Motherwise, and we are part of the Lake County Breastfeeding Coalition that is a part of the Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board that advises the Board of Supervisors on issues related to, as you may guess, maternal, child, and adolescent health. We are doing a campaign this August, which is right now, where I can't believe we're eight days into it. And that campaign is called No Shame. And the idea is that there can be a lot of shame and stigma around the idea of breastfeeding or feeding your child in public, whatever that might look like. Uh, and so what we want to do is just make sure that folks know that there are many places around the county that are great to go to if you need to breastfeed when you're out in public. I just learned that on the second floor in the county courthouse, they have created a new breastfeeding room very recently. And we're always on the lookout to make sure that other public facilities do that as well. So if you want to follow First Five Lake on social media, there's a bunch of really great graphics and information about how not just mom can enhance and celebrate her breastfeeding journey, but her partner, her spouse, her family, and everyone who's involved in raising that little human.
Yeah, thank you. You did that without reading. Okay, now we'll move on to item three, presentation of the Recreation and Events Division Quarterly Update. Mister?
Administrative Services Director Swanson will give the presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. Tonight, we are going to give you an overview of the activities of the Recreation and Events Division over the past couple of months, as well as give you the survey results of the springtime survey that we put out for the public to answer. So we conducted a comprehensive community survey to understand what the community really wanted from the Recreation and Events Division and the programs that we should be bringing forward. So we conducted that, like I said, in spring of this year. We had a total of two hundred and seventy-two respondents over the span of two months. And we distributed the survey in on both online, on our social media, on our website, several channels. And we also did paper-based surveys. Our focus was really to get an idea of different demographics and what their needs were, wants were, and also to try to pinpoint where the geographic reach of our program and what kind of activities, participation, timing preferences, various details like that. So in our age categories for reporting household members, the majority, as you can see, were eighteen to fifty-four, but it does have a quite a range over zero to fifty-five plus. The majority of our respondents came from the city of Clear Lake. However, as you can see, there were also Kelseyville and nine five four five eight, nine five four five seven, several areas. So the point to this is that we're not just reaching the city of Clear Lake with our recreation and events. We're reaching countywide. The activity interests in the majority were for youth camps and youth sports leagues. As you can see, the maroon is very interested and teal is not interested. And then the tan somewhat interested and gray would attend. So the majority for youth sports leagues and youth camps were very interested and would attend. Some additional activity interests include fitness and wellness, arts and crafts, and cooking classes focused on healthy meal prep, paintings, ceramics, walking groups, boot camps. Outdoor adventures were also a big one. Nature walks, guided hikes, and kayaking. Family-friendly events and beginner-level excursions for all ages were a big interest as well. Senior programs, many older adults expressed interest in low-impact fitness, social clubs, and arts or music workshops. Those requests were including daytime programming, accessible transportation, and support for building intergenerational connections. Technology classes, basic computer skills, smartphone usage, online safety. And so preferred time of the year varies by age. So obviously, the summertime is popular for youth events. And while adults are pretty well year-round, adults and seniors pretty well year-round with seniors preferring weekday sessions mid-morning. And for adults and family, it's weekday evenings, Saturday mornings for community events and youth activities. So the motivating factors. Our survey asked participants what most influences their decision to take part in community programs, and the top two motivators which emerged were convenient location and affordable cost. Another motivating factor beyond location and cost was a safe environment and the quality of instructors. Participants want well-lit and supervised activities and visible staff presence and staff who are knowledgeable, certified, and enthusiastic. They also would like staff that represent diversity and values of the community. Environmental factors that influence the satisfaction and likelihood of participating in city-run recreation programs include cleanliness, accessibility for all abilities, and the variety of our programs. As you can see, most rated these very important. With a very slim amount of respondents rating it not at all important. Community preferences. So music genres. The music genres. Hmm. Technology. Okay. So the music genres that we had listed for a question on what more genre? So the music genres that we had listed for um, a question on what what genres they would like for the concerts and events in the park. Most common mentioned were country, rock, and R and B. But additional mentions included jazz, pop, hip-hop, and classical. The cultural representation, many expressed a desire to see events that celebrate Native American heritage. Our local cultural traditions and inclusive holiday and seasonal observances. Respondents emphasized the importance of respectful, authentic representation and our opportunities to share their own culture. So we also asked the respondents, where did they learn about city programs and events? And the top responses by far, the top response by far was social media. Um, the second was word of mouth. And then the city, followed by the city website and event flyers at businesses, schools, and community center. So some um, things that we have coming up and things that we have done. Uh, I've included some pictures here for everyone to see. We do have, obviously, the Clearlake Concert Series, which. Is always a good time, brings lots of people to the park, especially if you were there on the July fifth. Concert for Dylan Schneider, that was a lot of fun. This weekend, on Saturday, we have the Highway Vega Bonds, which is a tribute to Miranda Lambert. Should be a good time. September sixth, we have Jay Webb. And August sixteenth, we've got Aqua Net. We did have some baking day camps at the youth center. As you can see here, the kids were baking um, cookies. Well. They were um, icing them, so that was fun. We also had a CSI camp. Um, which was a training basically for the teenagers to go in and um. Learn about how to um, kind of process a a murder scene. And which was really popular, sold out really quickly, and we've got um, people asking for it again. We've got fishing day camps. So we always post our our monthly events on the website and on our social media. As you can see, this is August event. And we've got a lot going on. And we have just as many planned for September and October going through the end of the year. Uh, tomorrow night is Bingo at the Youth Center. We always have a great time, and I just want to mention that. Uh, the Bingo is one hundred percent donation. And all of the donations that we receive at Bingo Night or through for it, through any program that we run, all of the donations do go directly to youth. Programs and funding youth activities. Uh, Saturday, we have a sold-out ice cream social. Um, so that's also gonna have um. Ice cream, obviously, but we're also gonna do activities for the kids such as crafting and bracelet making, things like that. And then there is a baking class coming up. It is a um. Super Mario Brothers themed baking class where the kids are gonna make an entire cake. Um, based on the Mari- Super Mario Brothers. That one's not sold out yet. We are starting a kids, well, a Clearlake Craft Club. Once a month, so we're going to do crafts once a month at the Youth Center, and this first one coming up. Um, is September thirteenth from one to three. You can find all of this information on our Rec and Events webpage, and you can uh, register there as well. We've got a fishing day camp coming up. On September thirteenth. And then also trunk-or-treat this year, we're going to be having contests for the best. Um, decorated trunk, the scariest trunk, um, those types of things, best costumed trunk. So if you're interested in being a trunker, it's a lot of fun. Um, let us know, contact Charlotte or some somebody here at um, Admin Services. We are looking for donations of candy as well. We are planning a kids' fall camp during Thanksgiving break, Monday through Wednesday, so uh, registration for that is open now. That one will be from eight thirty AM to three thirty PM, and again, that's during um, Thanksgiving break. So that is our presentation of the survey and the events that we're doing. Um, I want to mention also that. We will be having cookies and cocoa with Santa in December, along with, we're planning the Christmas parade. We also have in the works basketball and volleyball at the Youth Center on Thursday evenings. I'm gonna make sure I didn't miss anything, but Charlotte. White, the Recreation and Events Coordinator is on the Zoom, so she or I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. That was a great presentation. Uh, are there any questions from Council for Charlotte? Okay, Vice Mayor Sloten has a question.
Do you track anything of uh, any any data that shows that there are people that are coming here from. Are within Clearlake or or outside of the city limits, or? How far is that reached when these concerts and events are done over here in City of Clearlake?
I don't have any.
We haven't been tracking or asking people specifics during their um. During our events. Um, I know that we have a way to track who comes to the concerts. But we could start doing that, but the specifically for the survey, we have been tracking, and when they also when they um, register. For our events, like the the kids' day camps or the baking, we do get their addresses. So yes, we we actually do track it that way.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, um, Mr. Vice Mayor. We do have some economic development software that we use for retail tracking that tracks um, cellphone data, so um, we do have a setup we could. See a number of people in the park within a timeframe and where they came from and went before and after that, so we could follow up on that.
I heard, I don't know if this is true or not, I heard there were like over fourteen thousand on July fifth, somewhere near the park during the whole day. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's awesome.
It is. Okay, any other comments? Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that great report, and thank you, uh, Charlotte on Zoom for being available there. We'll move on now to a consent agenda. So items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature. And will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Unless a member of the council requests otherwise, or a staff has requested a change or. Change under adoption of the agenda, in which case the item will be removed for separate consideration. Any items so removed. Will be taken up following the motion to approve the consent agenda. Um, uh, Mister City Manager, are there any changes or? Agenda, Council, do you want to, anything that you want to pull? All right, then I will accept the motion to.
Mister Mayor, we do need to ask if there's any public.
Uh, any, well. All right, is there any public comment on any of our consent agenda items? All right, now seeing none. I get back for action.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Downey.
Paul Second.
And seconded by Vice Mayor Sloten. His vote in the portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we'll move on to our first business item, number nine.
Mister Mayor, I hate to jump in again, but you did skip general public comment. So we need to.
I'm sorry.
You did skip general public comment. So we need to go to that before we go to the business items. Item F.
I'm in a hurry to get going, I guess. All right. I apologize. Um, we have two written requests for public comment. Public comment, by the way, is time for any member. Of the public to address the City Council on any matter, not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act with limited exceptions does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on the next available agenda. Please note, the comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. And I do note that there is one request for public comment that is on an agenda item, and I think um. We'd wait for the agenda item for that comment. So the first one, uh, call Chris Talaferro. Up and state your name and where you live and.
Good evening, uh, name is Chris Talaferro, um, City of Clearlake resident. Uh, I want to first stop by saying thank you to Cal Fire, the whole team, everybody. I'm one of the property that was affected by the fire on Sunday. Um, lost about seven acres, um, but there, everybody was tremendous, PG&E, Cal Fire, local. Um, so just want to say thank you to the start of that. Um, the second part is my family came in about two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. And talked about the area behind Pomos School, because there used to be a lot of homeless, there used to be a lot of trash that was being dumped in that area. And came up with a plan to say, hey, we'll help clean it up, we'll do this part. Um, and the city came up with a plan to clean it up, and you guys have done tremendous amount of work that you guys have done back there. As far as picking up trash and making sure that people don't dump things in that area. But one of the issues is they open up Eastlake, um, further on, it goes all the way to um, Arrowhead Road before it turns into um. I think it's Burn Valley Road, right there. And um, so they've had barricades up there, and when they opened it up, there was people dumping materials, there was a lot of trash being dumped. And our family came and said, listen, if you're not gonna police the area, close it. Right, because we don't, we want to make sure that 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 people can't go back there and just dump, because there's. Like I said, like a couple fires that started in that area. And we're doing our part to try and keep our area safe, and so um. That was about two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen period, and the city has done a tremendous job cleaning it up, so with the. Acacia now being one way in front of the school for the kids. Um, my family, when we had to evacuate on Sunday, had to go towards the fire to get out. They had no other way because the barricades were blocking off that that part of Eastlake. Um, so safety for not only my family, but the kids. If the families are coming in one way on Acacia, that's another avenue for the parents to drive completely out and get through the city quicker, so. Um, just wanted to propose that you guys take off the barricades. Um, eventually, you know, as you're doing more work around there with the schools, you pave that, pave that, that'd be great. Um, but at least to open it up so we have an option to be able to drive and get out and for fires and anything like that, so.
Thank you, Mister Talaferro. Okay, next we have Joe Colabella. Nicole Bella, come up, introduce yourself and tell us where you live.
I'm Joe Colabella. I'm a member of the Highlands Harbor uh, Homeowners Group Board, and I live in Clearlake in Highlands Harbor. Um, everyone there got a letter that came from the Highlands Harbor uh, Board, and uh, this is just a quick synopsis of it in my three minutes. Our neighborhood in the Highlands Harbor subdivision of taxpaying, voting, permanent residence is one of the nicest residential areas in the city of Clearlake. Or has been until recent disruptions caused by vacation, vacation rentals with no permits issued from the city have arisen. When the city was holding hearings on vacation rental law in past years, we voiced the potential issues within our neighborhood. And the city refused not to allow vacation rentals in our area and assured us they would enforce the law, which they have not. Two in particular have been operating in Highlands Harbor since early April, and there are actually renters there today. And were brought to the attention of Mark Roberts from Planning and followed up another meeting with Mark Roberts with Alan Flora. Other issues were submitted to Clearlake PD, Clearlake Fire, and Code Enforcement. We discovered that at a meeting from the Vacation Rental App with Alan and Mark Roberts. Uh, on a screen shown by, to myself and Henry Borstein, who's with me, that despite the city having the ability to easily discover when a vacation rental is being advertised. And whether it has a permit or not. Plus numerous other comply, non-compliance issues that were on the vacation rental permit from the city. And the city had not been enforcing these and has not. There are out-of-town people purchasing properties in some cases as money-making, short-term vacation rentals. With no permits and do not qualify to be issued a permit, as there are two mentioned, as the two mentioned above. Clearlake Ordinance states that an owner must live in these properties fifty-one percent of the time, not the case in these. And multiple homes have been purchased for the sole purpose of occasional rentals, vacation rentals. As a business in zoned residential areas. Which is not envisioned by the law. Also, the city was required to notify adjoining neighbors within three hundred feet of the possible permitting for objections, never done as well. If I open a business in Clearlake without a permit, a business license, a state of California tax ID, and a certificate for occupancy. That bit of business would be shuttered immediately. Why not here? Our questions from the letter we sent are, why has the law not been enforced? Why haven't these illegal rentals in the city that knows about them been shut down? And why has this situation gotten so out of hand? When can we expect the city to take control and protect its taxpaying, voting, permanent residents in the city of Clearlake? And we'd like to get a response by the eighteenth, as we put in the letter. We'd like to get our neighborhood back and. Return it to the quality neighborhood that it was. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Colabella.
If I could just share a little update of the council, I did meet with um. Mister Borstein, Mister Colabella, uh, as was explained to them at the meeting, um, we. Um, were aware of some unpermitted um, short-term rentals. Um, we are in the process of notifying all of them um, that are not in compliance. About the permitting process, the two that have been specifically referenced. Um, have submitted applications and are being reviewed by staff, um, so we're just. You know, working through the the process consistent with the municipal code, and if they meet the requirements, permits will be issued. Um, if there's issues with those, there's a whole process in the ordinance related to um. Reporting violations and possible revocation of those permits, so that's just kind of a quick update of where we are.
Okay, thank you. Hello.
Good evening.
What, excuse me?
I'm Mrs. Lebranche, and uh, I am bringing a problem that has the whole city actually surrounded.
Your ma'am, where do you live? Where, you, do you live in Clearlake? Where do you live?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, this plant. It's a very invasive species. It smells bad. It kills the other plants around, and it's everywhere. I mean, it's. The worst weed infestation that I have seen. And it's in, pretty much in every yard. Uh, the plant is, if it's this big. The roots are that long, and it goes straight down. It soaks up groundwater, kills the other plants, and it. I I could be wrong, because I just read it online once. Think it produces three hundred thousand seeds every season. And uh, I, when I first moved in, I didn't know what was on my property. I had to pay a thousand dollars per tree to have it cut down. They get to be eighty feet high. And as I said, it's on public property, private property, it's everywhere in this town. And somebody has to do something about it, because this is, this is pretty much killer, and it smells bad, too. As I said, I brought one just for the smell test. If I might leave this with someone.
Leave it over here with our clerk.
Thank you.
Over here, yes. Okay, thank you, ma'am. There any other would like to speak, uh, Mister Spatier?
Good evening, council members. I'm so glad you have presentations early, because I got here late, so I can still give you guys a public comment.
Just for you.
Just for me, thank you. Uh, resident of Clearlake, and uh, I was really pleased with something I saw last week, and I wanted to make sure that. The Police Department was aware, Public Works was aware, and the council was aware. So on Friday, uh, thank. So on Friday, thank you for having Shakespeare at the lake. Really glad that the city, the Chamber of Commerce, the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce. And Lake County Theater Company are continuing to support the arts in the area. I think that's fabulous and the fact that it's happening in your park on your stage is amazing. It's not always easy to do theater in an open space, less control. But what you've done this year I thought was fabulous. I saw your public works, they closed down the road right behind the stage. We've heard Harley Davidson's before passing by, they can't help themselves, they're loud. But the fact that it emptied the road behind the stage just changed the whole atmosphere so you could really hear and understand everything that was happening and really allowed you to focus on the play. There were a lot of people in the park. Some people stopped by and really enjoyed the show and some people. Were a little bit more animated and maybe inappropriate in comparison to what was needed for the play to be really the focus. And I don't know who it was, but somehow it got the attraction of the police department and I was, I want to say in less than five minutes, what was a distraction was de-escalated. Mitigated and taken care of. The fact that you acted as quickly as you did to ensure a proper atmosphere for this theater company to provide entertainment in your park. The fact that your public works added something to make the environment more appropriate for this theater. I just want to share my appreciation because what I saw I was proud of and I'm sure all the people there really appreciated it. And I just think it shows great effort from the city to make sure that it provides an environment that's suitable for the things that we're bringing here. So. Just wanted to say thank you and kudos to the police department and to Public Works for their efforts because even though. I didn't expect the play to end at about nine o'clock, but they were still there and took down the, the blockade and reopened the road and it was just fantastic. It was a good collaboration. So, thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Spatia. Come on up. Introduce yourself and tell us where you live. Okay, well, I do, but you still have to do that.
I'm Harvey Bateman. I am a citizen of Clear Lake here on 36th Avenue. I didn't get my paper in time, so I thank you for the chance and I'm glad to see animal control here. Because my problem virtually is with animal control. I know the two young ladies here and I haven't.
Are your comments about animal control?
Yes.
This is an agendized item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got in late. I'll step back.
Well, it's okay. You can come back later though.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other comments on non-agendized items in the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. And jump over consent, which we've already done. And move on to business, item number nine. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, so. I'll, I'll just give a very brief introduction, then I'm going to. Ask Chief Sepater to, to come up and share with the council. So. Last year, the city council had a number of public hearings and business items related to fire mitigation fee. So a couple of things are important to understand about this and kind of the interface between the city and Lake County Fire Protection District is. The mitigation fee act allows government agencies to impose a fee on new development. Special districts such as the Fire Protection District don't have the authority to do it. It has to be done be either a city or county and so. There was a process in place, all the fire districts worked together. Did nexus studies and brought these forward. So this has been on the books in City of Clear Lake since the 1990s. This was an update to those fees. City Council did adopt the fees as requested by Lake County Fire Protection District. One difference in practice that was put into the ordinance was that the city of Clear Lake itself would collect the fee as part of the billing permit process. And then provide that revenue in a special fund and then provide it to the fire district. And that's, that's the practice that's been happening since that was adopted. I, I forget now September, October of last year's when we started doing that. In some meetings about implementation of this, the fire chief had requested that we reconsider. City collecting the fee and having the fire district collect the fee. So. It is a fee that the city is responsible for collection or making sure that it's collected appropriately and, and there's reporting requirements that we do have. But there isn't, there is flexibility in the law that either the city or the fire district could do the actual collection. So. I think with that background, unless you have any questions for me, we can turn it over to Chief.
Would, yeah, just quickly, what. We can. We can get, if we have to collect the fees in order to do the reporting, is that, so it's an either if we turn it over to the fire department then.
Well, I mean, it, it is possible to not collect the fees and still do the reporting. We'd be relying on. Information from fire district, which we still have to get some information from them regardless part of the reporting process we have to do is. You know, what the money is spent on and that type of thing. So there's going to be some interface regardless of how it's set up.
Okay, thank you. Chief.
Good evening, everybody. What a good day. I will spate up our chief of Lake County Fire, if I can pass this out. Fire prayer, members of the council. Chief Pops. Mr. Flora. So, I want to like to thank you for allowing us our mitigation fees. It's going to allow us. The future growth of the Lake County Fire Protection by needed fire and the MS. So, the growth of our, our department, as we stated before, our call volume is well over 6,000 calls per year. It progresses, our community is going to grow, which is going to need newer equipment and new facilities. And, and as we looked at the adoption of the nexus study, it talked about the fees being collected predominantly, we had hoped it would be the fire department. My department's been doing it for, for 30 years now. We had predecessors on both the city, the county and the fire districts as a whole that had done some things that weren't up to speed. We've corrected those with policies, procedures, checks and balances and trainings. One of the things we look at in the collection of fees is that done at the station, we can be a one-stop shop. So when the fees are paid to the city and the city reimburses the fire department, whether it be a quarter, biannually or annually. At that time, we have to go through and reconcile and make sure we have proper calculations in the collection fees. So if they've been undercollected, then we would have to try to go back. If they've been overcollected, then it gives, then of course we have to do that reimbursement. So all the reporting that had to be done, Misha would be coordinating with your staff to make sure that is done as, as required and like. Manager, city manager Flora was stating, there's interactions as you guys are doing your reports that you have to get from, from us. So we're hoping to be maybe some open dialogue or maybe a reconciliation to let us, it would allow for you to come in the door, go through, we do our calculations. We do the collection of the fees and you're, you're done. Those fees are guaranteed based upon the, the documents you bring to us from, from your permitting process. That was one of the, the main things that we were hoping for is the collection of that. Our second part has to do with the 2% administrative fees. So, so that is a special fund that we wanted to put back into an account to pay for the next nexus study. They're due every eight years. The one that we have currently was $16,000 and the other one's doing about five and a half years. And so when we did get this reimbursement check, we were the 2% short. So the two things we're, we're asking, we're hoping, I don't, I don't know if we'll settle it tonight or we can have some further discussion. Is that of the district going and collecting the fees and doing what you need to make sure that you're comfortable and, and forth worth with everything that we're doing? And the second is to, to reinstate that 2% back to the district, otherwise that growth. We're, we're just not going to, we're not going to catch up. Not that that 2% is ever going to catch us up. The nexus study, the fees we collect are never going to pay for the equipment that we have to have. As I stated before, in 2014, that engine cost me 275,000. That engine today costs me 675,000. So it's never going to pay, it's going to be grants and it's going to be funding and those other things, they're going to augment that. And as we look at the growth of our community, we are looking at new facilities. As we stated in the nexus study, the airport station is projected to in the future, maybe not in my career. But that'll be Station 71 that will cover the main corridor of Highway 53. Our Lower Lake Station would cover all the Lower Lake community up to Anderson Ranch Parkway. And then the Station 70, our admin station, will cover the core of the city all the way out to Colorado Windflower Point. Maybe 40 years from now when all that develops, our Station 73, which is at Pine Dell, may optimally be another staff station. You know, but with our growth, you know, we definitely, we look at NFP 1710 and 1720. Staffing for rural fire departments were behind the curve and we're really trying to look at those additional personnel to accommodate our calls. But thank you for your time. Are there any questions? Smiles, that's a good thing.
I, I have a question. So we had a discussion, I think it was last September about who was going to collect these. And that time it was decided the city was going to do that. But I, I do remember that 2%. So if we, if the city has the, the obligation or the requirement to do the reporting, then we have some cost on it too. So now. Now we take that 2% that you don't get, so to speak, but how do we get reimbursed for our work or the report?
Well, then, see the reporting, Misha's going to be doing majority of the reporting, giving it to you, there would be that small percentage, but. For us to be able to, you know, continue to progress with our nexus study fees, we're just asking for the 2% back and. We're just asking for the city to reinstate for the fire district, be able to do the calculating and collecting.
I, I guess I have the same concern. There is a cost whether Misha does the work or. Whether we do because we still have the background responsibility of reporting, which is going to take some, some effort and some time and thus some cost. Do we have any idea what that cost could be?
Well, I mean, the 2% isn't going to cover, cover either one of our costs with doing it. I mean, it's not, I mean, we, we have everything set up in. You know, our, our portal now, so it's not super labor intensive to calculate. I mean, there's, there's definitely some different points of interpretation, like when you have. You know, the Boils Fire is a good example. We all lost all those homes. The policy of the city is that if you rebuild that within a certain period of time. And I think with the fire district and the, the school district as well, that the existing square footage. You get credit for that, like you don't have to pay if you rebuild, right? But we don't always have good records. The assessors office has some records that are accurate. So I mean, we don't need to get in the weeds too much, but I'm just saying like, there is.
There are costs.
There's some lack of clarity there and some interpretation around how that is set up. But yes, there's going to be costs to do it. I mean, as an example, I think. We sent you a check for 22, 24,000 for what was collected between September, October and the end of July. I mean, the administrative cost on that, just to give you an idea, was a little over $400. So, but we can set it up however you want. I mean, what was put in the ordinance. I mean, Chief Sepater is correct, in the nexus study envisioned that the district was collecting the fee. In the ordinance, we, you know, it says that the city would collect it and keep the 2% fee, but.
And the 2% amounts to, again, about the 16?
Well, no, no, that's, that's what, that's, that was like the $400 out of 24,000.
Okay, what, what on the total for last year was the 2%?
$400.
$400 total? We're arguing about $400?
We're not arguing.
No, I, I. We're simply asking for, for the potential to, to, you know, reinstate the, the 2%.
Yeah. Oh.
I, I feel like the fire. That they, they don't have a ton of revenue in, revenue sources and I think that they, we should give them everything that we can. And if it's a. $400 bill for communication, we should have an open line with them and be able to work with them. And so I'm, I'm all for giving them the 2% back.
Other comments? I'm, I'm okay with it too. I just.
If we give, would we still be collecting the fees or will the fire?
It's entirely up to three of you.
What, what has worked in the past for you?
Over the last 30 years, you know, the fire departments collected. And on behalf of all the fire districts and the counties and the cities, there was miscalculations in how it was done. So that came to fruition when we did our nexus study. And since then, all the fire districts, we've, you know, redone policies, procedures, training to bring us up to, to where we should be. And it was one of those. That our, our forefathers did all that and it was this kind of, that was a practice. And during that time, my district reimbursed over $40,000 for miscollection of fees. We found the error, we went back three years, made it right, our corrective actions. We had it run through our legal, went through my board of, or board of directors. And corrected those and we're on to moving forward and being error free.
Okay.
So you have the staff to collect fees?
Yeah.
And.
Okay, are there any other questions for you? All right, I think we'll open it up to public comment.
Thank you.
Where we bring it back for action. Thanks, chief. There anybody in the public that would like to make comment on this item? Wow. We'll bring it back. So I think we all feel, it sounds like we all feel about the same way. Do we need to vote on this?
Well, you need to give me direction. I mean, if, no, if there's a change that you want to do, we're going to have to amend the ordinance. So it's going to have to come back. Have first and second reading and all that, but you're going to need to give me a little more direction than you have so far.
All right. Well, I think. I think that we, I think the consensus seems to be that we give you a direction to. Take another look, this possibly amend the ordinance in order to allow the fire department, is that worse than fire district to collect the fees directly?
And keep the 2%.
Well, yeah, I would go with that.
Yeah. Make sure that's.
You need more, you need more direction than that?
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to count here. It looks like there's a majority of you. So I, I.
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Sure, I think, I believe we're all, oh, at least three of us are okay with it. Does that, I'm sort of looking. I know there are five of us. He always refers to the three of you. Because that's what it takes. I think you have your direction.
Okay.
Is that clear enough? Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay. Now we'll move on to the. Item number 10. This is going to be handled a little differently. This was brought forth not by. Not by staff, but rather by. Councilmember Downey. And myself acting as a committee on animal control. And so I'm going to make initial presentation. And then we'll move to. Councilmember Downey to finish it. This is not one that I'm in any way paid or formed. And are taking any pleasure in. I want you all to know that. But we have a problem. Animal control initially started in this city. Under, well, back when Chief White was here, they, we built the, built the shelter. CPD really administered everything at the courthouse. And then we, I think we looked at it and thought perhaps it would be better done by contracting it out. We negotiated or were contacted by North Bay Animal Services. Negotiated with them and signed a contract in August of 2022, a 10-year with a 10-year term. North Bay was, this is a little history. North Bay is supposedly responsible for animal care, sheltering and control services in the city limits. MBAS is a no-kill operation or a limited. Get the terms, but basically they have a library, they have to have a library lease rate of at least 90% or more. North Bay has consistently had one of 99%, which sounds wonderful and it is. Now, nobody wants to. To put a dog down or a cat, either one. to put a dog down or a cat, either one. Twenty-twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, mostly we're gearing up. Trying to, everybody get uh, North Bay was gearing up, uh, the city was helping to, to make the changeover. CPD, uh, I think both Lieutenant Snyder and you Lieutenant Peterson were involved with that. Everything was, nothing was really said, good or bad, in those, at that for initially, but twenty-three, twenty-four. We began to receive complaints from citizens. Dog numbers in the shelter were increasing. There was a, a slow responsiveness and a, and a lack of communication was cited repeatedly by citizens in the city. Luckily, the Lake County Grand Jury did an investigation of, of animal control in twenty-twenty-four. They cited the shelter with overcrowding. Timely medi- uh, timely medical care for sick or injured animals was not always provided. Lack of communication with the community, and this is one I'll emphasize, there is a huge lack of communication to this day. Cleaning practices needed improvement and there was inconsistent food quality cited. That was what the grand jury report came up with. Moving on, twenty-four, twenty-five. Complaints continued to increase substantially from previous years. They included slow or failure to respond to or follow up on community reports of loose dogs, roaming neighborhoods and attacking other dogs or cats and occasionally people. Large numbers of unaltered dogs, both in yards and roaming freely around the area are leading to an exponential increase in puppies with the potential for two litters per year per animal. Reports have come in of several instances within the city of twenty-plus dogs in yards that are running freely. None of them appear, most of them or none of them, in most cases uh, are licensed and most of them are intact. So they're all potentially going to produce more, more dogs. These should be known, they, these, these yards should be known, the MBAS has several have been involved in code enforcement actions, but no action was taken on these. Other volunteer groups in the area have done a, a lot to try to uh, keep some of these under control. To with some, some success in helping with that. Those are things that should have been led by North Bay. Monthly reports at our council meetings have until the past month shown up to seventy-plus animals in the shelter. This is not sustainable. Shelter was built for less than forty, I believe. Uh, the most recent report did show a decrease. The same time, recent complaints received from community members are indicating a refusal, refusal to pick up loose dogs or accept new ones being brought in. Probably that's the reason that there's a slight decrease, because they're not accepting new dogs or more dogs. Notably, the twenty-four, twenty-five Sonoma County Grand Jury Report was even more critical of MBAS within the four cities that they work in Sonoma County with similar complaints cited to what the Lake County Grand Journey came up with. An absence of local decision-making authority contributes to this slow response or no responses or calls to follow up. When you call North Bay and inevitably you go to, you get uh, directed to their Petaluma office and they say, oh, we'll call somebody to get them out there. The response times are, are varied, but many times were very slow and then there's no follow-up calls back to them. I have called on different occasions and experienced the same thing personally. I had an instance here a couple of weeks ago and one came up and I, I uh, was per- I was particularly ecstatic. And I did got, get a call back from the manager of North Bay, Mr. Scott. Um, to tell me that uh, he was, that he had instructed one of his ACOs to go out and, and do something with the dog. And I did go off the property and the ACO did show up. Thank you, Julia, for that and took care of the situation. Um, I've never had a problem with, with you folks here on the ground and, and Clear Lake. It's a problem with management. An absence of local decision-making authority contributes to that slow response. That's Petaluma. That's not Clear Lake. MBAS had burned bridges with local rescues and other volunteer support groups, which contributes to the difficulties in placing animals out for adoption. There's also been instances where dogs were released back to owners without requiring spaying or neutering, that's vaccinating or licensing. While this may get the animal out of the shelter, it is perpetuating the problem. The very high live release rate, while it may be admirable. And nobody wants to, nobody wants to kill a dog. I don't. And, but it's, it's not sustainable with the current, with the numbers we have. It's just not sustainable. MBAS has shown a strong resistance to accepting that they'll have to be a higher, may require a higher euthanasia rate. This has led to the increased numbers in the shelter and they're turning away animals and need to be taken off the street as a result of that. Taking all this into consideration, the only conclusion that can be drawn is there needs to be a major change. Now I'm going to turn the second part over to Councilmember Downey. She has got uh, will do some closing comments on them. And then I'll take questions, or then I'll answer questions and then the public comment.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and fellow council members. I'd like to introduce an agenda item requesting that we begin the process of terminating our contract with North Bay Animal Services and direct the city manager accordingly. This recommendation is not made lightly, but is became increasingly clear that this organization is not meeting the needs of our community or the standards we expect from our service providers. We have received repeated reports and I have personally experienced that North Bay Animal Services consistently fails to respond in a timely manner when contacted. Calls often go unanswered and when they are eventually returned, response times can range from several hours to multiple days or even for urgent situations. Furthermore, North Bay Animal Services does not provide rabies vaccinations, nor do they enforce the rabies licensing requirements that are mandated under California law, according to the California Code, Code Regulation Title Seventeen, Section two-six-zero-six and provisions of Health and Safety Code. All dogs over the, over four months of age must be vaccinated against rabies and licensed by local jurisdiction. These measures are essential for, for protecting public and health, ensuring community safety and maintaining legal compliance. The absence of these basic services by our current provider is not only unacceptable, but it also creates unnecessary risk and liabilities for the city and its residents. In addition, there are growing concerns about overcrowding at the shelter and the apparent failure to move animals into homes or rescues at a sustainable rate. These raises seri- serious questions about animal welfare and overall effectiveness of their operations. Given all this, I believe it is our responsibility to explore better alternatives for animal services that align with our city's needs and values. I'm asking for council support in directing the city manager to begin the process of canceling our current contract with North Bay Animal Service and looking at a viable, more responsive option.
Thank you, Councilmember Downey. Are there any questions from the rest of the council?
Yeah. The uh,
Vice Mayor, can you turn your mic over?
The uh, life release later, the city is less than one percent. The county is over thirty-one percent. That's part of the problem. The second is, is also I kind of disagree with. The Sonoma Grand Jury in their report also blames the agencies for lack of oversight. And according to the contract, we have two options. One is at, uh, will, at uh, with cause or without cause. The with cause is for two months, if I remember right, for thirty, sixty days. But if you want to do that, you have to first give them the opportunity in writing of how to fix the problems that we believe we have. So that's what, that's why I'm not want to move forward with canceling the contract at this point. That we need to give them a chance to correct the problems and we have to demand that in writing. That's my comment.
And to answer part of that, we have the choice, as you say, to do, to cancel the contract um, for cause or without cause. Without cause gives them six months to do a changeover and that's would be what my recommendation is. And I think Councilmember Downey, that's yours as well.
Yes.
I, I believe that. I believe that we should give them a chance. We have to direct them in writing what our issues are and have them respond before we can even go with it.
We, we've directed them.
There's been several directions and there's been no changes.
Has that, has that been in writing? Because I haven't seen any of it.
Again, if we're doing it for cause, yeah, it has to be in writing. If we do it without cause, it does not.
I think
And there's six months.
I think it, to be fair, we need to give them a chance.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson?
Um, I agree with um, Vice Mayor, um, Sluton. Um, when you hire somebody, you owe them the uh, due process that you, and you think should be in writing. And I'm concerned, my concern is if we go to someone else, that if we don't use a written process with um, progressive discipline as you do an employee, then we're setting ourselves up to do, have this problem again.
Yeah, this, this of course is not an employee, it's a contractor.
The, the other point, excuse me, the other point that I want to make is there, you know, I read through the contract, there are really no performance standards in uh, timeframes to, to reply for calls and stuff like that. There are some, but they're kind of vague. So I mean, you know, when you get a call, uh, fortunately, unfortunately, I had a call county Alan, Animal Control and uh, for a property that we owned and just outside the city. And after three days, the tenant says, well, heck, I'm just going to bring the animals, two dogs roaming around free, no color, nothing to that found in, I guess, Lakeport or whatever it is. So the county then never even showed up. Not to blame the county, but we, we have to deal with this problem, but I think we need to give them a chance to correct what we feel is, is not handled correctly.
I, I do also think that um, we have a problem with the contract if we don't have in place um, sta- statistical measures to figure out, to um, hold them to and, and something that we can say you're not doing. We're, again, we're going to be set up for the next um, the next agency and be stuck with uh, what's going on.
Well, of course, in negotiating the next contract, those things would be in there. Councilmember, do you have any comment?
I'm just listening.
Any more comments, council?
I've, I mean, there is, we, we've got a proposal last year uh, from another entity. And um, I, I, I don't know if that's appropriate to even talk about it at this point. I believe that strongly again that we should give North Bay written instructions, a written and a demand, a written response before we can cancel a contract. That's my feeling.
Again, with cause, I would agree with you. Without cause, I don't agree with you. But that's, we both, we both said what we have to say about that. I'm going to open this up to public comment. Um, gentlemen, that Mr. Hackett?
Name's Hackett. I live in Clear Lake. And I apologize if I seem a little bit nervous. I don't, don't do public speaking too well. I volunteer for North Bay. I agree with Vice Mayor Sluton. Okay? We fouled up when we gave him the contract, okay? Didn't have anything in there. Give him a chance. Okay? In my thirty years of running an auditing department, I didn't care who was at fault. Let's fix the problem and go on. Okay? We have a problem. We have a shelter that should have been double in size for what we have as a city. Okay? There needs to be help, okay? When another person ran the shelter for the city, Mark came up here numerous times and helped them out. Yet, that isn't happening and returning that favor. My, you know, my thing is, is I don't need fame and glory. And I volunteered with Rita many, many, many years. I've been involved with animals for a long time. They are part of families. Okay? We do have a problem. We have a problem that the police department can help. Ie, they're writing a ticket for a homeless person. They have a violation with a dog. How long does it really take to add another violation on? CHP does it all the time. You know, you get a ticket from the CHP. If there's violations, you get three, four, or five lines. All of that needs to be a team effort. We need to get together. We need to put differences aside. We need to not worry who's the victor. Really, the victor is going to be the city of Clear Lake, the animals and the citizens of Clear Lake. That's our goal. We need to take the time and go through and support each other. Okay? I know the person that wants to come in. I've dealt with her in the past. She, she is a nice person. She can be a pain. You know, I've often called her a little Rita up and coming. Okay? But her heart is the animals. Well, let's get everybody together. You know, we need a spay and neuter clinic. If we got all of the rescues together, we could get that clinic. We've got the operating theater at the SPCA. We can rent it. We just need a vet. A vet costs money. If everybody comes up and, sorry, Alan, I, I I know. But to put down an animal costs
Mr. Hackett, you need to, you need to wrap up your
Okay, no problem. Let's get that money pooled and fix the problem. Fixing, I mean, we can change ten different people that may or may not fix the problem. But right now we have one person in there that these girls are trying their damnedest to do what they need to do. Let's support them. Let's help them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I would like to say something. We have tried to work with Scott and we have gotten all the rescues and orga- organizations together. And he won't work with us. He won't work with anyone. So it's a management problem.
Okay, okay, okay.
Let's try.
Let's move on to the next speaker here. Mr. Hackett. I'm sorry, not Mr. Hackett.
That's all right. Now, uh, you know, you covered most of it and everything about uh, taking so long on calls and a lot of cases not. And I know when I've spoke to them directly, they have gotten there. But when I'm calling Petaluma, I'm lucky to get through that call and stuff, let alone get a response, which I have asked for and never have gotten. And you can go down two blocks to my house, Phillips to Boyle's, and you'll find ten to fifteen dogs running around. I've reported them. They're not licensed. They're not neutered. They have bitten people. They're chasing after kids, motorcycles and bikes. Somebody's going to get seriously hurt. You know? If we could, if they had the communication and got out there and started citing these people, you would have more revenue in order to do what's necessary. Thank you.
I, I would agree with you. I think our local app, I, I live, had um, contact with pretty much all of you, though certainly the uh, Dominic and Julia mainly, but I don't have a problem with you and I do, and I know that your heart is in helping the animals here. It's not that. It's, it's the lack of communication from management. Um, that's the problem and it's, it needs to be uh, fixed, whether we cancel the contract tomorrow morning or whether we work with uh, with Mr. Scott. It's got to be fixed because it's just not working now. Are there any other comments from the audience? We have a. Sure. And no, no, come up here, introduce yourself.
My name is Russ Hartzell. I used to live out on Third Thicke Bush. These ladies and gentlemen has helped me many times with the dogs I've rescued over those thirteen years I've been here.
Right.
Okay, and changing hands with someone else ain't going to work. These people are the best we've got right now. But management, I agree, they need to get off their butt and do something about that. But we all need to work together to make sure that happens correctly.
And it's possible that those folks up here would be here, whether it's the current management or another management.
Well, we'll have the client someone that's going to do their job to help these people because these guys are busting their butt every day. And lack of communication, it's not their fault, it's management's. But these guys are doing their best, believe me. They've helped me thousands of times.
Absolutely, absolutely agree with that.
So if they need something, again, they need my help, I'm here.
And thank you.
I'm not a good speaker either, so I wrote some stuff down.
You need to introduce yourself. I know you, but you still need to.
My name is Kathy Plowman. Okay, I wish to tell you my feelings about the plans at the Smithy North Bay. The thing is, is these girls work really hard. They are not. And you have brought up before about, and you can't use the word euthanizing. Euthanizing means to put down an animal that is not well. What you uh want to do is to kill animals, okay? You we have, it's our fault. We we made this problem, okay? We need to fix it and stuff. We need a spay and neuter clinic here. We needed a good shelter here. Okay, it's just not North Bay. Sure, Mark works with me. I call him, you know what? He, some homeless lady brought in a dog, okay, because somebody didn't step up. Well, names a name and I wouldn't get this dog fixed. She came in, the dog was huge pregnant. I called Mark in a heartbeat. Took it over, had her aborted, no problem. He's kicked down. He's got, I don't know how many, to the to the SPCA. He's been spending like sixteen hundred uh dollars a month. For people that couldn't afford to get their animals um fixed. Um, he's also getting another cat fixed that needed, uh has a heart problem and stuff. That I'm working on right now. He's going to be kicking down a thousand dollars for that. So I don't know what you guys are. I know that he has a communication problems sometimes, but when I call him, he seems to always be there and stuff and I work for. The thrift store and stuff and I worked through North Bay. I'm a volunteer and stuff. And I know what the plans are. I know some of you guys are friends of the person that wants to come in. And I'm the, I don't have anything against her. I don't. And stuff, but you know, North Bay stepped in because there was a problem. Things weren't getting done before. Okay, so we need to fix this problem. We don't need to be killing animals. We need to spay and neuter, spay and neuter, spay and neuter. That's the whole thing. You know, what will happen is dog will have puppies. Person can't afford them, they throw them out on the street, the county, the the city has to come along and euthanize them. And it keeps on and on and on. So if you don't get those animals fixed and stuff, it's just going to keep going. It's never going to stop. And you'd have to have mass killings to ever turn it around. I mean, mass killings. I came, I've been here for twenty-six years. I was born and raised in Napa, moved up here in ninety-nine. So I've seen it all and stuff, but instead of firing people, let's. Get some of these people that want to come in and we all hold hands, seeing kumbaya and get it done. Okay, and maybe that might be a a great help, you know, instead of worrying about. Euthanizing a bunch of, it's killing a bunch of animals. And that's what you're you guys are looking for.
I don't think anybody up here has mentioned anybody else coming in. If we did this, we would do an RFP. Going out, ma'am, and you're about to run out of time, so.
And just so you know, part of the contract with North Bay is to provide spay and neutering within the city limits and that has not happened. So it is a responsibility of North Bay to provide that service.
He has.
And that has not happened.
Well, he has been uh going through the SPCA and he's been spending, it's being neutering sixteen hundred dollars a month. For at least about six months now. Now, we've got the paperwork and stuff, so um he's been kicking down the funds and everything for that, so. There you go.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
I'm Norman Watson. I donate the use of the retail and warehouse buildings in which Fifty Boys operates. I do this because I love North Bay's mission, which is to spay, neuter, foster, place. And protect the domestic and feral animals in and around Clear Lake. It was true that Mark Scott's organization is no longer be going to be in charge and that the people who will be taking over are going to abandon his no-kill policy. And begin to put down healthy animals that with better management could have been saved, then I cannot in good conscience. Continue to offer any support, aid, comfort or resources. What's being proposed, as was previously pointed out on this forum, is not euthanasia. Euthanasia is performed to end the suffering of an animal that's terminally ill or otherwise incapable of enjoying life. It's an act of kindness. What's being contemplated is not. This is the dispassionate killing of healthy animals simply because their presence is inconvenient. Convenience killing. These pets are going to die just because over the years, not enough resources were allocated to keep their numbers under control. Now, it's being proposed, they be dealt with. This previous error be dealt with in the most heartless, brutal way imaginable. Pray, hope and beg, but discourse is not taken. Thank you.
No one is going to euthanize or wanting euthanasia.
Yes, thank you.
I don't.
Let's, let's, you can go ahead and respond in a minute.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Charlie Witham. I live here in Clear Lake and I just. Want to say, okay, North Bay, when they came in, they came in under false pretenses. The bid is totally under what he is putting out. And. The city, the city council needs to come up with some more money for. How about a grant writer that can give us a new shelter? That little, that's what you could, what we're calling a shelter out there is not a shelter. And it needs to be updated. Where the animals, we could take in more animals and we could do a lot better. Mark is trying hard. Mark leaves, it's going to be a lot of people leave at the same time and there's not going to be any help. You guys need to think about that. Thank you.
Or any other comments? Need to introduce yourself and where you're, where you live.
Kathy Thompson from Clear Lake. And I don't know a lot of the ins and outs I'm hearing now, but. I can tell you, these people here, you're not going to find people dedicated who love those animals and are putting everything. They can into taking care of those and doing what they can within the constraints they have. And I don't really know any of them personally. We had a loose dog situation over where I live. And all those neighbors fell in love with them, but I go every week to visit those animals there. And alls I see is hardworking, compassionate people that would do anything and they do as much as. They're able to with all the constraints. So I'd hate to see those people leave because they do love every animal in that shelter and I've seen it. So, that's all I have to say.
I I would hate to see those people leave either. It's not those people. Thank you, ma'am.
Uh Chris Talafaro, City of Clear Lake. Um, so I knew nothing about this whole topic. I don't even know who actually runs any of it, but I'm sitting back there listening. And everybody talks about what an amazing job they do and that that's awesome. But what I haven't seen is, and you guys talked about, you have a problem with management, the way they communicate. Where is that management here today at a meeting where they should be defending themselves?
They're somewhere in Petaluma.
And so, so my concern is, is that, you know, they're allowing these people to work, work and work, but they're not communicating the same message with the city. Um, and it's unfortunate because it's the people that work here want to do right for the animals, want to do all that right. They're not getting the same message, just proceed to you guys to the city. And whether that is, it wasn't written a contract correctly, whatever that is, they should be, were wanting to work with you guys. Wanted to build those relationships instead of just, you know, not showing up. So that's my.
Thank you, Mister Talafaro. Introduce yourself, although of course we all know you and.
Fon Williams, City of Clear Lake. I've heard a lot of people say that um Mark Scott needs to be given a chance. He's been given multiple chances. Dirk, you've been on this city council when he was instructed to clear the warehouse out and he didn't. He's been asked multiple times to do things. He's been asked about the licensing. It hasn't been followed up on. I'm hearing comments about all of the rescues and everyone working together. Well, you know what? We all are, with the exception of Mark Scott. We all had a meeting. We had rescues out of Sonoma County, Napa County, Mendocino County. We had. All of the rescues up here in Lake County, the SPCA, Mark. And then Mark proceeded to come here before the next city council meeting and ridicule the efforts. Of us getting that meeting together to try to work together. All of the rest of us are working together. But Mark Scott is not, and it is not these animal control officers that are sitting here that are the problem. They are not being given the tools that they need to do their jobs properly. And without proper management or having management up here, it's not going to change. And the gentleman that was just up here made a very good point. Where is management at this meeting? They knew it was happening. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. H. Haven't you been here already?
Yeah. I didn't know about this meeting this week. But I have personally asked him to come up on the seventeen, no, the twenty-first. So he is being given a chance to answer.
He's already been given a chance.
Okay, but I'm just wanting it out there and stuff that.
You knew about this meeting. Are there any other comments? Introduce yourself.
My name is Mike Thompson. I've been in Clear Lake since eighty-nine. I've owned a business here local for thirty-plus years. Um, it's on Old Fifty-three. I've actually rescued plenty of dogs that have come into my shop because I don't want them running out in the street. Um, so I understand that management is the problem, but I don't see how if it manages the issue, turning it into a kill shelter, it's going to solve all that. I mean, all that the dogs run loose before I turn them into a kill shelter, you'll probably lose all those people if you turn it into a kill shelter. So I don't, has any of you ever gone down to that and just spent there and seen some of those dogs? You just want to kill all them? I mean, are we going to go kill the homeless people because they're leaving litters and messing and coming up to people and drive-throughs and hitting them up for stuff and doing drugs? So should we euthanize them or should we fix the source and try to, management's the problem, it's not the dogs? The money, I agree that you're going to spend on all this euthanizing and doing all that, that money could be spent for, like you said, spade and stuff. I mean, I would even pay a little more on my taxes to see that. So I'm going to do whatever it takes and I hope these people do to make sure that we don't turn it into a kill shelter. And if I got to let dogs run low in my neighborhood, I had two dogs, my cat got scared and ran. The dogs didn't chew them, but they chased after them. Oh, the cat broke his leg and I had to put it down. Those are those same two dogs that me and my wife go visit every week. And I was very upset I lost my cat, but he said, it's in those dogs' fault. But let's just kill all the dogs and that'll solve the problem. It's not going to solve the problem. You're just going to, like he said, vicious circle. You'll just keep killing dogs just like they do in Lakeport and they still have dogs running loose. So anyways, that's all I wanted to say.
Well, to answer that, nobody up here is is suggesting that we make this a kill shelter. Nobody. What is happening, what is happening? What is happening though is that we have. Dogs coming into this shelter because they are not coming into the shelter because they don't have room. They're wandering around, saying, on. You spoke, now I'm going to. People are out, these dogs are out, out in the bout. Some of them are in yards, some of them are running up and down the roads. They have at at least a puppy, at least one litter a year. Some of them even get almost two a year. That's up to eight, sixteen to twenty extra puppies every year that are growing that that population. And those dogs that are, a lot of them are out there running around. You think they're having a great life? They're uh getting hit by, they're getting hit by cars in some cases. Other, some dogs are killing other dogs when another dog is in heat. I witnessed that earlier this week. So we're not looking at killing or changing this into a kill shelter, but yeah, euthanasia has got to be considered. And and I don't like doing it anymore than anyone else does. I have a dog and two cats. I've always had dogs. So don't tell me. That I don't have a heart, that I just want to go kill them. You're making that implication and I'm laying, it irritated me now. So let's just, just understand that. Okay, I'm I'm done, so please go down. And I'm really happy with that, but the same sense, we can't get a little clinic. I have a mechanic that. Please sit down, sir. He rescued two dogs and he couldn't get them fixed. Please sit down, sir. No, you're going to have to come up here to speak.
If I, if I can, Mister Mayor, I I would just advise that we uh not engage directly during public comment. Under the Brown Act.
I don't necessarily want to, but I.
I I understand it's a motive topic, but it'd be best to give the public an opportunity to speak.
All right.
I'm sorry, I, Charlene Witham again. What happened to the one cent um that was put on sales stacks? To build a new shelter? Whatever happened with that? Anybody got any ideas?
There was never one cent. There was never one cent put on to build a new shelter.
Back in two thousand, what you said? Two thousand and nine.
Measure P. That was for police.
Nope, it was for the shelter. Okay, that was for the show.
Okay, is there anyone on, I apologize for speaking out, but it got to the point where I just couldn't not. Are there any other comments? No, sir, you've, no, sir, no, sir, no, sir, you've already talked. There's a gentleman back here. Please, sir, please sit, sir. Lieutenant, would you ask this gentleman to sit down? What?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Gary Weldon. Um, I didn't come here to plan to speak. I I was just kind of a casual observer in the back. Uh, there's an elephant in the room that's not being addressed here and let let me address it. I I hear a lot of passionate people in here. The animal community is very passionate. I appreciate that. You strip away all the emotion, though the fact remains, the reality is you hired a professional organization to perform a job. They're not doing that job. Now, I'm an IT director for a large wine company. I oversee several wineries. I can't show up and work and say, guys, I'm really trying. Somebody just give me a chance. That's not how professional organizations work. You hired a company to manage the operation. They're failing at that. And that needs, that's the reality. This this notion that, well, we all need to work together and give them a chance. If if I hire a contractor to come remodel my kitchen and they, and it's an absolute failure, I don't. I don't step back and say, well, you know, the guy's really trying. Let's give him a chance. No. You're a professional organization. That is your discipline. That is your expertise. You should be accountable. Whether there's uh service level agreements for for timing, you know, to response timer, you know, all of that aside. You entrust in them as a professional organization. That they understand that dynamic and can deliver. Um, and and that's all I wanted to say. I I think there's a lack of accountability and I agree. I'm sure these people are 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 great and they and they try and they do a great job um with with the resources and tools that they have. But you know, again, you strip the emotion aside, they are tasked to do a job, not not these. ladies and gentlemen. But the organization as a whole, they have a job to do. They're failing to deliver on that promise and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there, is, hold on. Yeah, please, ma'am. Please state your name and where you live.
I'm Stephanie Hummel and I'm from Clear Lake and, um, so I was just reading here that, um, this is discussion and consideration of animal care control contract with North Bay Animal Services. So is the only thing we're doing here, um, to, to decide about the North Bay Animal Services or is, um, the, uh, kill stuff also being, um, brought up and I don't know if, um, it's just like a rumor or, um, so I, 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 cause I had heard something as well, but, um, I just had a que, that question because I don't really know.
Answer the question. No, we're not talking tonight about whether it should be kill or no kill. Uh, it is, it is a note, I guess you determine it's no kill shelter. It's we have a ninety, they have a ninety-nine percent release, release, live release rate, which is great. And we'd love to keep that. Whether we can keep that high, a no kill shelter by definition is ninety percent or higher live release. But we know, we're not talking about that tonight. Simply talking about uh, our concerns with the management, the current management of our animal control. Are there any other, uh, people that would like to come up and state your name? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Suzie Heidebruck. I live here in Clear Lake and have for almost forty years. I was a volunteer at the shelter several years ago. The staff was wonderful. Management didn't exist. The person that was actually in my eyes was a manager. She managed, she networked out the dogs, so they weren't there for a whole long time. We had a few that spent some time, but she would try to network everyone out. I know when I went to adopt my dog, I had to go to Lakeport. And they insisted that, um, she be fixed before they would release her. I never saw that happen at that shelter when Mark was involved. He would just, he would release.
You, you never saw what happened?
I never saw them require that these dogs had to be fixed before they were released to the owners.
Did they require they be licensed?
No, there was no requirements whatsoever, other than you prove you own the dog.
Did they require they'd be vaccinated?
Nope. Nothing. So, and I want to address the issue about the spay and neuter clinic. God bless Fon and everybody with the SPCA. They're there, what, three days? Month, maybe four. Where they're fixing the, the cats, the dogs, the ferrets. And we have pet fix that have, this is our second one. Third one. And we have more coming. So spay and neuter is available. You just have to be able to get on the phone at six o'clock in the morning.
It, it is available and to be fair, part of this problem on the, on the span neutering is, is really a shortage of veterinarians. SPCA is doing a wonderful job with, with the grant money that they have to put on, I think, four clinics total. Five total. Uh, which will do what? Two hundred dogs and cats? For, yeah. Thousand a year. But there's still, there's unfortunately, there's more than that out there. Um, but veterinarians are, are few and far between.
Yeah, I, I know. Mine is overwhelmed, but you still, it should be a requirement. Or make it a condition that you go and get that animal fixed. I mean, I have thirty-eight cats. All contained. All fixed. And one dog, but that's because they would show up and I'm not going to let them loose. I'm sorry. I don't. We're overrun. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, are there any other comments?
Hello, can you guys hear me? Okay. I'm sorry, I'm nervous to public speak, but I'm Becca Edwards and I'm from the Humane Society for Inland Mendocino County. Um, I'm the Life Saving Programs Manager there. And I feel for the passion in the room tonight. I just really hope as this conversation moves forward that we can move away from the terms kill and no kill. Um, speaking to other people who care and love about animals and accusing them of killing is really not how we're going to get the collaboration that's needed. And I think shelters should really move forward and focus on the programs and what your community needs from you as a shelter versus a live release rate number, because anyone can show those numbers. You're not showing what's actually happening in the facility and what programs and what the community needs from you. So I just hope that that can be reduced a little bit as we move forward. Um, we love working with Lake County and we could plan to continue to do so. Um, and we'd love to have a shelter that is supporting the community the way it needs.
Thank you, Beck. I've heard, by the way, I've heard some great things about you and I'd hope to meet you. So I appreciate what you have done at, at Inland.
Thank you.
Alright. Um, I don't see any more hands raised. I think, uh, I will close public comment. Uh, excuse me, uh, public comment out here is, are there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we'll call, close, cut, public comment, bring it back for further discussion and possible action. And, uh, I figured you would.
Go first. I, I really believe that, um, in order to do it properly, we need to have some written conversations with North Bay. And put it in writing what is expected of them. And if they don't within a certain period of time, if we have to wait six months anyway, because I don't believe there's any way we can uh, go fire them with cause at this point, because there's no written communication that support any of these back, these allegations. So I think really we need to figure out a way to communicate with the leadership of North Bay and put everything in writing. So we have some basis for future dismissal of the term.
Again, just to clarify, we're not looking at terminating for cause in sixty days. We're looking at a six month period. Um, I will ask, uh, City Manager Flora, I know you spoke with, uh, Mr. Scott. Can you tell me a little bit about that conversation?
I, I don't think that's particularly appropriate in this form. I'm not sure what you're wanting me to share exactly, but.
Oh, I just, I guess I want to ask whether he would like to come in and, uh, accommodate, uh, Vice Mayor Slotin's comments about, uh, trying to fix the management.
Well, I mean, yeah, he expressed an interest in continuing the relationship, if that's what you're looking.
And what's he willing to do, did he say?
I didn't give him a list of things.
Well, I would like to say one thing is he's had his list of things and his contract that he signed in twenty twenty-two. So he, he knows what is expected of him and his organization from the city and he's not abiding by it. He's not, there's no leadership. He's not providing the services to our people of the city. So he's had the list. He, he knows what he's supposed to be doing. So therefore I don't believe that if he really cared, he'd be here right now. He would be fighting for the people, his employees that he's standing here right now on behalf of them.
I have to agree with that too. But, um, what, now let's, let Councilmember Wilson stutter her hand on that.
As much as I agree with Vice Mayor Slotin. Um, and I know this isn't a hearing. But this man let all of his employees come here and show up for him and he's not here and I'm having trouble taking seriously that he, um, cares about the contract or change.
Did, I think, first minute, if I might, Jessica, you're attending, you go first.
Um, just the observation, I like the point that the gentleman made, um, putting emotion aside, obviously there's a lot of emotion in the room tonight, but putting emotion aside, the contract has not been has not been.
Appelled.
Yeah, upheld and, um, that's just, that's what I'm taking from this.
If I might comment on it, if I look at the specific things that this says about spay neuter. The contractor will endeavor to provide low cost and your services consistent with available funding. That's too vague. So I think that's part of the problem. The contract was not, didn't have any performance standards in it. So it's hard. So I think that's, that's what makes me want to have this conversation or things in writing with, with North Bay to actually see him respond. His response in writing. So we have a basis for future legal action if that, if it comes to that. Just my point.
Well, it, if we want to get into the details, um, also stated in the contract, it says contractors solely responsible for all costs incurred by providing such care and that, and that is medical expenses in which spay neutering is in that category of medical expenses and services.
That is the way, the way I interpreted it as well. Yeah. And it's, yeah, the, it he agreed to a contract for a certain amount per year. Um, and that, and, and all expenses and everything were to be included in that payment that we're making, they have annual, uh, payments, went three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year, which by the way is in comparison on the, uh, Sonoma County Grand Jury, they, they had a breakout of of what, uh, all of the providers were being paid. And the Lake County, and they did it on a basis of so much for ten thousand. I was trying to look through it and see if I could find it, but at any rate, as I recall, we were paying them almost double what they are being paid by the four cities in, uh, in Sonoma County that they're working for. Just an observation. Um, any other comments? Do we want to? Does this need a vote or is this need a consensus or what's it need?
Yes, I recommend a, a motion and a vote.
On a full motion.
Yeah, a specific motion.
Alright. Are we ready to do that? Or is there any more comment by anyone, discussion by anyone? Okay, uh, do we have that on? Before we start, uh, do we have that on the? So we can vote.
There's not a motion in the staff report. It just says direction to staff. So you'll need to do a voice vote, whatever you.
Or do you want consensus on that direction?
Uh, as the city attorney said, you need to have a vote.
Okay.
So I, I can help, yeah, clearly define motion and what the direction is.
Yeah.
And then we'll have a.
Okay.
Alright.
I can do that.
Have a vote.
Go ahead.
Alright. So where is that? Um, I move to cancel termination of contract with North Bay Animal Services with due with no cause, giving a six month, uh, written, written notice.
So the, the motion is to direct the, uh, city manager.
Oh, sorry, to direct the city manager to do so.
Okay, to direct the city manager to provide notice of termination without cause. Um, which, under the contract is a hundred and eighty day.
Motion has been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, motion has been made by Councilmember Downey and seconded by Councilmember Hooton. Um, gonna do a, a voice vote. Do we have it?
If you'd like, Mayor, you can vote in the portal for this.
We can vote in the portal, okay.
Motion passes with vote of three with Kramer, Downey and Hooton voting in favor. Vice Mayor Slotin voting against. And Councilmember Wilson abstaining, uh, for the record, Councilmember Wilson, please state the reason for your abstention.
Um, like, oh. I had some problem with the process and, um, I will talk with counsel about it later.
Okay. Um, thank you for count on the vote again. This is not something that I have taken any pleasure whatsoever. Um, emotions have been high. I do apologize for my own uh, outburst at one point, as was pointed out by our attorney. But a change needs to be made and I believe we're doing the right thing. So given that, we'll now move on to.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question? Does the council have any direction on what we're supposed to do after I send the notice of termination?
Um, yeah. Well, we're, it'll be noticed on a six month basis and I think as a follow up and I'll, if I can speak. Follow up to, I guess, do an RFP. Uh, with the standard, what we're looking for and the responsibilities. I think if we can clean that up a little bit, that might make the next contract. Or so, tell me what you think, uh, Mr. Dressel here.
So, well, I think what the, the council could do tonight is to direct a future agenda item. So you, you could direct that o, o, on a future agenda item discussion of and direction regarding an RFP for animal control services.
Okay, we need to do that fairly soon if we're pending a.
Cause it's not agenda. So it's sort of the only thing before the council tonight is direction regarding.
Right. I think we, we should bring that back as an agenda item fairly soon. If notice is being sent to North Bay. Um, in the event, you know, I don't know how long they'll, they may want to leave tomorrow. They may want to stay the whole six months, but we need to be getting, moving forward for that replacement. Or at least being, looking for, uh, an interim if we can't get a replacement before they leave. So we need to act agenda, I, well, we do future agenda.
Yeah.
I think we'll bring that up. Alrighty. Moving on. I lost my place. City managers report. Okay, we'll move on to managers reports. Mr. Flora.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Um, I would again like to think, um, Lake County Fire Protection District and Cal Fire and other, um, agencies, including our Police Department, Public Works and others that were involved in response to the lake fire on Sunday. Um, it was definitely a close one to feel like we're very fortunate, um, to escape significant damage. A, along the line, um, that was, uh, well, I guess that one and then this week both, uh, there was a fire, um, can't remember if it was last night or the night before. Um, Wednesday. Um, that started and didn't, um, amount to as much, but, um, there were arrests related to both of the origins of those fires and it's related to, um, Public Resources Code, mowing without. public resources code, mowing without fire protection equipment. So both of them were started by folks who were mowing when they, when they shouldn't have been. So we're going to be sending out some information, trying to put some initial information out to the community, reminding them how to handle that and be prepared, so we don't have these types of incidents. We are coordinating with Lake County Fire Protection District around an opportunity for our community to get a fire risk reduction community designation, which will give us an advantage and priority status on fire mitigation funding. So we're going to be working on that. Expect something to come back to the council in the next few months related to. Want to remind the community and the council that the Cleveland Police Department's National Night Out Event happens next Tuesday, five o'clock, Austin Park. Always a great event for the kids in particular, and you might get the chance to dunk the chief, so probably should show up and participate in that. This is something that's came up by a number of members of the public for a while, but one of the projects that's going to be going out to bid next week is the Moss-Davis Project up to the landfill. That's a collaboration with the county, and so part of that, of course, is the area that's really bad, just east of the intersection that used to be maintained by Caltrans, but will be part of that project, so that's exciting. We're still working on getting the Burns Valley Arrowhead Olympic project out to bid. There's been some issues with our funding agency related to that, so we're working through a few things and still anticipating to get that out to bid and under construction this year. The property, the old apartments near the lamplighter, there's been a very bad state of disrepair for some period of time. There was a receivership hearing this week. We were expecting the receiver to be appointed. Unfortunately, it was delayed again till the end of the month, and the judge said that there will be an order at that time, but that's not going to be happening till at least August twenty-fifth. Some good news, although it's a little nerdy. I know Vice Mayor Sloton always appreciates this, but got notice of our Calpers retirement investment returns. They came in for the second year over assumptions, eleven-point-six percent. The assumed rate of return is six-point-eight percent, so pretty significant amount of excess earnings. And so the result of that, we don't know the numbers yet until, until next year, but it will result in a reduction in our future retirement rates.
And funded liability going down.
That is correct. It could go up again next year, but it's always good news when we get it. So with that, that's.
Great. Okay, Councilmember.
I have nothing to report.
It's number Wilson.
I attended the PEG TV meeting on Monday night. We had a considerable discussion about a proposal to upgrade equipment at the Silver East Theater, so we could have more professional presentations and let's see. The financial report, everything looks good on the financial report, and I don't have anything else on that.
Okay, Councilmember Downey?
Not too much to report, but I did attend the Shakespeare on the Lake on Saturday in the park, and I was quite impressed with the attendance, and it was great, really enjoyed it, and I really look forward to seeing more things like that in our parks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sloton?
I have nothing to report.
The only thing I had, I know you may have mentioned it, Mr. Flora, that we also received have, are turning in part of the application for a Cal Fire grant. Did you talk about that in your?
Well, I can tell you didn't listen to my report, but no, I did not.
Did you? No.
No, I did not.
I did listen to your report.
We, it's, we're not, we didn't turn in an application. We simply.
No, we turned in a letter of support. It is, if we were to get the money, it would be, what, either two-hundred-and-fifty or three-hundred thousand dollars. It will go to fire resilience projects here in the city on up to a hundred lots. It's a pretty good deal if we're to get it. We won't hear it probably until the end of the year. And again, as I understand the grant correctly, it'll run through twenty-twenty-eight. We'll have a couple of years to be able to use money if we get it. Okay. Future agenda items.
I have one.
All right.
I would like to look at the look at the promised program. We had some communication with Woodland College President and just recently with the dean about tweaking the promised program for Clear Lake residents to attend Lake County Campus at Woodland College.
Thank you, Mr. Sloton. Alrighty. Anyone else have a future agenda report or item? Well, I would like to then at least add the second part of the annual control discussion of how did you turn that, Mr.?
The council already gave direction on this. It's not necessary to add as a future agenda item.
I believe that, did I understand that correctly?
Well, I'm just saying you already gave direction. You don't need to do it again.
And what?
No, the R.
No.
We didn't do that.
Mr. Drexel, do you?
You gave direction, you gave direction to have a second agenda item to talk about it. So I'm saying, under future agenda items, you don't need to do it a second.
Because I already did it before, to make sure that was, you know. All right, so that is all. We will adjourn at eight-ten. Hey, Jessica, I want to ask.